Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's Common Council meeting. See, everybody has checked in with the exception of Mr. Jockeck, who so far is absent. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, IMC, sorry, is a public hearing on November 5th, 2019. The proposed 2020 budget was published in the official city newspaper, the Marshfield News Herald. At this time, members of the public are invited to comment on the proposed 2020 budget. Anyone from the public wish to address the council? Second call, anyone from the public wish to address the council regarding the budget? Final call, anyone wishing to address the council? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and move on to item D, public comment. At this time, the mayor will recognize members of the public who have indicated their desire to address the council. On recognition by the mayor, persons may address the council from the podium for stating their name and address. Council may take action on emergency matters introduced by members of the public. Anyone from the public wish to address the council? Seeing no one, we will go on to item D, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the November 12, 2019 council meeting, motion by Mr. Fire, second by Mrs. Spears? Mr. Bargender, you wish to amend? All right, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Motion carries nine to zero. Item F, any staff updates?
Just one, I got a text message just as this meeting was starting. I don't have my phone on otherwise. But Councilmember Jockeck has indicated he will be late, but he will join us.
Anything else? No. Item G, Mayor's comments, Darren Larson from the Police Department, November 28th, 1989, 30 years. And Mark Cavella from Wastewater, November 30th, 1999, 20 years. Thank them both very much for their service. And I'd just like to tell the council last week that there was the employee recognition dinner that Jen and her committee put on. It was very well received from the employees and the committee did a lot of work. And so it was a lot of fun to be up. And some great awards were given. It's the first annual, so hopefully there will be more. Item H, any council comments? Mr. Fire?
I think it's appropriate to congratulate the mayor and his wife for the 25th anniversary. I think one good turn deserves another.
That's right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else from the... Mr. Butkie? I'm sorry, Mrs. Spears?
Okay, you pick a lot of order. Yes, I am on the UW Commission, and I just wanted... Some of you have this sheet in front of you. I'm sorry, didn't have enough for everybody. But they wanted me to pass this on regarding their enrollment. Laura Bell, the Director of Enrollment Operations, reported in her 10-week admissions funnel activities that efforts are starting to show results in the number of applications, which are ahead of last year at this time. First-year students at UWSP of Marshville is up 100% in total applications and up 200% in total admits. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Mr. Butkie, did you?
Yes. How many years is the mayor for you?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Is your wife going for sainthood?
She's already been, yeah, she's already a saint. All right, any reports from commissions, boards, and committees? Now, we'll move on to item J, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to receive and place on file proving all recommended actions in the consent agendas? There is a motion by Mr. Fire, second by Mr. Butkie. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. That motion carries nine to zero. Item L, update on the Aquatic Center project and the request for clarification on covering soft costs related to the project presented by Justin Casperson, Parks and Recreation Director.
Yeah, good time. Basketball practice, yelling at the eighth grade girl, so I apologize for my tardiness. So this item was to discuss and make sure we have clarity on the $6 million project. Let me catch my breath. The council approved the challenge grant in a project of $6 million. Air's estimate was at $6 million, but it didn't include soft costs. Soft costs are the engineering costs, the community foundation costs, fundraising costs, marketing costs, things that don't really go into the actual construction of the pool project itself. The concrete, the building, plumbing, electrical, things of that nature. With Air's associates, Air's estimate at $6 million and a soft cost of about $500,000, that gives the total overall budget about $6.5 million. So when we go out to bid, we really would like to know if it's at six or 6.5. We've had a lot of discussions. We used the number six, but there's been some clarity or some questions by both Airs and Boson. Is it really six or is it 6.5? Because our estimates are about 6.5. If it is really six, we'll have to reduce the construction end of it to about 5.5 to cover the soft costs. So I'm throwing it back to the council to say, A, give me some clarity. I want to make sure I'm following the right direction.
Mr. Whittle?
Thank you. Just to, again, we're looking at an aquatic center project which includes a fenced-in aquatic center and a building and also a parking lot. And that parking lot is going to be utilized for more than just the aquatic center, correct?
It could be for activities at the park, yes.
Okay, so for example, when we have Maple Fall Fest, things like that, the pool isn't open at those times, correct? So then that would be very, very beneficial to the park. Do we have any idea what the cost of that parking lot itself is?
Some of the estimates that we use would be like concrete, and concrete was lumped into, most of the concrete was the pond. Can we find out? Yes, but I don't have that number of the parking lot costs in.
Do you think it's going to be more or less than $500,000?
You know, I'd almost have to defer to... Is there one in the audience? I'm not going to put you on the spot, but I really don't know what... It's like 148-stall parking lot. I can bring back that number four, future discussion, but I don't know, I don't have the parking lot cost.
Considering all of this, I guess my inclination would be to go ahead and cover soft costs separately, partly because of the fact that there's going to be aspects of that aquatic center that are beneficial to the park as a whole. And I think that we were already, if I understand correctly, are already scaling some things back to hit the six mark. I'd hate to see additional scaling back, so at this point, I would make a motion if that would be appropriate to go ahead and look at the soft costs as being separate from the aquatic costs.
It's a motion by Mr. Whittle, second by Mrs. Spears. Discussion, Mr. McSwain.
We have published a budget, haven't we, of $3 million for this?
Well, you know, I think this is where Justin's headed. I mean, the cost of the project has been discussed at being $6 million, $3 million from the city and $3 million from private donors. His question tonight is whether or not that's simply for construction of the aquatic center or whether it's deemed to include all costs, such as soft costs, which would reduce the amount that would be available for construction of the aquatic center structure itself.
Yes, I understand that, but what I'm questioning is how we can publish a budget and have a budget hearing, which even though nobody showed up, that's based on us committing $3 million and then open us up to committing more. I don't care whether you classify the cost as hard, soft, or slightly squishy. We've said $3 million.
I mean, ultimately, the borrowing that would take place would be a public event, would be on an agenda discussed, but I get what you're saying. Because the schedules that we show for debt would show the $3 million from the city at this point and no more, I presume, so I get your question certainly.
And I believe that that expense could be spread over from 2020 and 2021, so it wouldn't have to be just in one year. Because the construction will start in July of '20 and not be completed until '21, so final payment wouldn't be to the contractor till 2021.
So presumably, the 3.5, let's say that's the number that comes from hard plus soft costs, could be covered over two years and therefore the 2021 budget could cover the remaining difference to make it up.
Right, so this is a slow process, obviously, as the construction moves on, the costs move on, but they won't be done with the project till '21, till July of '21.
Mrs. Spears?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Whittle. I know that's a surprise, but I do agree with Mr. Whittle. This is a, you know, a once-in-a-lifetime project, generational project. I don't think that we want to skimp on it. And I certainly don't want to scale it back. You know, we are still in competition with nearby cities who already have their water parks. So I think that the council should, at some point and in some fashion, have Ron figure out where we're going to get this $500,000 for the soft costs.
Thank you, Mr. Butkie.
Rebecca stole my thunder on that. I totally agree with that. Let's do it right and get it done the right way. And I'll say too, I have to agree with Mr. Whittle, and that may or may not be a surprise.
Thank you, Mr. Hemmer.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a question for you, Mr. Casperson.
Yes.
Now, you're asking for some sort of help from this council to provide funds for the, what did you call them, the soft?
Soft costs, correct.
Yeah. Is there any way you can help the city out by looking at your own budget? For example, the, you know, what reminds me of is the funds that come from room taxes. And you have a number of projects within your budget this coming year. Is there any way you can help us reduce that cost of $500,000?
If that's the direction the council wants to take.
Okay, so you do have the money, yes or no?
I don't personally have the money.
I know that.
City still has the money and the budget, projects have been allocated for room taxes.
I mean, this is, you know, this is a big project, and I think wherever we can get some help, I think would be appreciated.
Just so everyone knows, the room tax has been fighting most of the legwork on the project up to this point, whether that was the compensation for Airs to do the study, the survey work, and most of the work that has been done so far has been...
So how much did you use up on that to do all this?
The room tax?
Yeah.
I think about $200 and some thousand so far. This is over a five-year period now.
Okay. Well, anyway, that's my concern. If we can, you know, lighten the load a bit for us, I would certainly appreciate that. I'm not against the project.
No, I understand what you're saying. No, I, I understand what you're asking too. I guess that's up to the council if they want to see that direction.
And I hope they make the right decision. Thank you. Mr. Bargender.
Thank you. First off, I'm not against the pool project at all, but when someone, when Director Parks and Rec drops a $500,000 bomb on the council, I struggle with that for the simple reason, this isn't the first project that we've completed here in the city of Marshfield in the last 15 or 10 to 15 years, okay? We should know the costs of every, these projects. We built the fire department, we built the library, we built Wenzel Park. We should know every cost associated with completing these projects. I'm just shocked and amazed that this was not included in it, and why is it questioned now? Why wasn't, why wasn't this brought up before we came up with, with the 2020 budget and before we approved the $3 million and $6 million overall? So I really struggle with this, and I think the taxpayers are going to too, so that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fire.
Having been involved with a few of these projects that we've built in the last 15 years, and every one of them had a cost overrun one way or another. You know, we had to add money to the, to the community center because we couldn't cover the asbestos and add on to the, complete the community center. We put a, we added to the fire station, we put half the basement in, we added that to the budget. This isn't the first time we've played with, with a project to get it done. And I've never heard the phrase "soft costs" before. It was always overruns or they, you know. So I think that we should just, just bite the bullet on this and, and do it right and not, not try to nickel and dime the budget to get this done. We did that a little bit with the, with the, with the library, and I wasn't happy with that. I don't want to see it done with this one. Let's just vote it and get it over with, build it the way it should be built.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I have a couple of questions and then a comment. My first question is, can you give me, what are, remind me of the list of things that are included in this soft cost?
Air's Associates fees and reimbursables, the Marshfield Community Foundation fees, fiber optic running to the facility, debt insurance cost, marketing and signage and promotional materials, and donor recognition signage.
Okay. I guess my question, and I'm not, don't expect you to answer this necessarily, but my question is, how did we not know that these were costs and why were they not? Like many people have said tonight, I'm all for this project. I think it will be a great thing for Marshfield. But when you budget something, I understand what Alderman Fire is saying about emergencies. I don't necessarily see these as emergencies. You, even when you're budgeting, you put a contingency fund together for emergencies. These do not seem like emergencies. These seem like, these seem like things that should have been put in an actual budget, and that's what I'm disappointed in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whittle.
Oh, thank you. I guess I had it on. Anyway. When was the pool study completed?
2016.
Okay, and so we came, we, you, you came to the council with a proposal, a design, an estimated, an estimated cost of what at that time?
$6 million.
Okay, and that was in what year?
2016.
Okay, so I don't know if we can put our funny guy on the spot back there or not, but if we were looking at 2016 to 2020, four years, what would we be looking at in terms of an inflationary change to a $6 million project? And so, you know, we came through four years ago with an estimate. We knew that estimate was going to be low because it took us four years to get to the point where we would be putting shovel dirt. And so I'm, I guess I'm not overly surprised that the costs are a little bit higher. What kinds of changes have you made to the design in order to cut costs thus far?
Well, we reconfigured the parking lot to be more streamlined, straighter lines, obviously. Reduced some landscaping, reduced amenities, so instead of tile floor, just brushed concrete. Lighting was changed to be more natural light, reduced the size of some facilities, like the lobby height. So there's various ways. Just spent a five-hour meeting with Bozen and Airs yesterday about cost reductions, and we came up with a number of more cost reductions for the facility.
Any other reductions in terms of the vessels themselves or the things that you had been planning for?
Not necessarily. These are cost reductions. For example, that if we have to reduce some costs, it might be on adding amenities that later on, like leaning lines, diving boards, basketball hoops, things of that.
In terms of the current plan that's moving forward, were there some significant changes to the number of vessels or things that way?
No, it's still.
Thought we had three and now we're down to two?
Well, one was a water feature that was standalone, which by state code had to make it three. It was an expensive standalone little water feature. It's not physically connected to each other. It's a standalone feature which then requires a whole new plumbing filtration system. So we decided to angst that right away because it was quite expensive for so small.
Okay, so you have made some significant changes, and again, I understand the argument of why weren't these things thought through and those types of things, but I think the truth of the matter is, and I think Mr. Jackek could probably agree with this, when push comes to shove, we're probably going to end up spending a little bit more just to make sure this is covered. And again, as was mentioned by some of my colleagues from the side here, this is a once-in-a-lifetime thing. We're already in competition. Let's get it done. Let's get it done right. And let's just pass this as an extra item.
Thank you, Mr. McSwain.
We did not vote on this three years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the argument and the comments that were made by Alderman Whittle. But even over the last now three years, there has been a lot of time before the publishing of this budget to have this conversation. Again, my comment is, it would have been great if we'd had this conversation two months ago, three months ago, not right after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butke.
The, again, I'm going to say, let's do it right. I mean, I can argue with, with some of the comments here, but I hate to hear when we talk about later. Later in this community, a lot of things don't get done. I'm not saying it went on the pool, but we got to do this thing right. I, I hate that we're cutting back trying to meet the budget. I get that all, but for example, the high school, I was the second class graduate from that high school out there, and they had plans for all these sports fields and so on and so forth. Guess what? We'll do it later. It's finally happening now. So again, the, I mean, there is good comments here, but I think we should move on and get it done right and maybe, maybe that's a, I'm not trying to blame anybody, you know, for why we weren't made aware of this, but we can put an notice out there from now on, projects that come up, we need to know this ahead of time, but let's move on and get it done right.
Thank you, Mr. Hemler.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, I think, I think Mr. Fire was correct that I think both the fire station and the library both had, they weren't termed to be soft costs, but they did have overrun, so to speak, for the unexpected. And one appreciates that. What really worries me about this, though, there's a $500,000 suggestion out there, and what happens if we go beyond that $500,000, if there are more overruns? You know, it's, it's pretty, pretty difficult to, to attach these things to the citizens on a continuous basis. So anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Sprouse.
I just want to talk about a couple of things. Myself, as well as Councilman Jackek, we're both on the pool committee and served alongside of Justin, along with numerous citizen, volunteer citizens. And we spent a lot of time, many, 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 many meetings, many trips to see other pools. And we did, you know, we did talk about different things, and I think what you need to understand is Airs gave us, gave us a price, so you know, that's what he does for a living. He builds pools, he builds municipal pools. So we went with what he had said, and it wasn't for lack of looking at other, other builders. We did that too. Additionally, at the time of all this planning, when the budget was first put forward, we did not know how we were going to raise the funds, so the cost for the Marshfield Community Foundation. That isn't something that we were sure of at the time when we were settling in on this pool. We knew we were going to have to raise funds somehow. We actually initially tried to put a committee together or talked about putting a committee together ourselves to save those costs. So, you know, some of this is just things that have come along that weren't necessarily, that we never thought about them. It's just that they were undecided at the time because you have to go in a certain order when you're doing a project of this nature. And if you've ever built a home yourself, you're going to understand that, you know, your builder tells you one cost and inevitably your, your own home is going to come in with costs that you didn't anticipate. And, and you know, not many of us sitting here are building a $6 million home, so we really can't compare apples to apples. But this isn't a huge surprise. Of course, we always like to know the full cost of a project when we're starting it. I've had that complaint myself in the past, but I think if you were involved in the process from the beginning, you may have a clearer picture of how some of this has unfolded. And I know that Justin has put an enormous amount of time into this project and, and I know that he has, has done his very best at, at trying to come to us with a clear budget.
Thank you, Nick.
Justin, you're not asking us to increase the budget or the, change the budget for 2020 to by a half a billion dollars, are you?
No, I'm just bringing this.
You're just asking us how we can spend the money. So is that half a million dollars? Is that a hard number or is that up to?
No, that's, that's, it's a variable number. It's not fixed because everything's based on percentage. Bozen's percent is based off the bids we receive. Once again, we don't have the bids in, so I can't say what those numbers will be. That may go up or down a little bit, but that's a percent. It's not a, a specific dollar amount. So a lot of these things are estimates based off percentages of construction costs that come in with bids we receive. So we can't forecast what those bids are, and so we go out to bid and we can bring them back for this body's consideration. So we get to this point when we start with plan development and conceptual design, and then we get to a 30% stage, and then we're at a 60% stage in which we just brought in Bozen to do a cost estimate on what it would cost to build a current pool at its current design. And this is kind of the thing that we've, we're talking about during our meetings, like what does that all entail? What does it all mean? And they said, well, we should get clarity on it because I don't think the council really clarified that. That's why I'm here, is to say, what do we, what is your expectation? Because I also don't want to go the other way and say, well, I assumed you meant those costs were, meant those things. They meant the Airs fees and the foundation fees. I shouldn't assume anything. I want you guys to make a decision. And I'm just going to bring it back and the group can make a decision, and I'm okay if we reduce it. There's some changes that will happen. I'm okay if we increase it. But the Airs Associates gave us estimate at $6 billion, so I use that number.
Thank you, Justin. I just wanted to make clear, make that clear to the people in the community and I think to some of the people on the council that we're not talking about changing the budget for 2020. Maybe for 2021, we'll need additional funding, which we probably will, as almost every public project requires additional funding later on after it gets started. So for 2020, we're not going to be increasing the budget. It's just all that money is spent.
Thank you, Mr. Jackek.
Okay, I agree with Alderwoman Sprouse. Everything I was going to say, she pretty much covered. The $6 million, I think, is, is the figure we've been working with, and I was surprised that we didn't hear $7 million or 7.5, given the timeframe that has passed, the almost five years since we, we, you know, got to this stage and have been reviewing this project and moving forward. So we always anticipated that there would be probably a higher cost than the $6 million. And I think, as was stated, the, the soft costs, I think we, we all knew were there to some degree. And, and this is the reality, so I, we need to move forward with this pool. We absolutely have to do this. So I would encourage those that are sort of on the fence to, to pass this so we can move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Butke.
Yeah, Becky talked about the, Justin and the committee did a lot of time, but spent a lot of time on this, and that's very true. 20 years ago, and I was told that to this council before, I chaired a committee for an aquatic center. That's how long we've been dealing with some of this. To answer one of Peter's concerns, overruns, I don't see the overruns on the soft costs too much after this, but any other overruns, which you always have on projects, that's contingency money. That's built into the budget. There's a certain percent. I don't know what it is now, just an offhand, but.
It's 5%, but that's in the construction.
Right, so if there's overruns there, it comes out of that. But my point to bring up about 20 years ago, it's time, folks. It's really time to move forward and get this project done, get it done well.
Thank you, Mr. Hemler.
Thank you, Your Honor. One more time. The other, other concern I have, hey, you talk about $3 million from the city. The other $3 million from the donation. Have we had any figures on donations? Because, you know, that's an unknown quantity too. Will those donations be here in a timely fashion to pay the bill when this is constructed? Or will the city again have to pick up the slack?
Justin, can you?
In the memo, it states that we're at 3/4 of a million dollars, which is very good for a, in my opinion, in many opinions, a fast-paced fundraising track. We have a number of large donors out there that are interested. Sometimes it takes them longer to move off a square one, but we're working with them and hopefully they step forward. Maybe they won't, but we've been very generous. Many of this community has been, has been overly generous with all the projects from, you name it, Wenzel, the school district, the university, to our even zoo, and they've given so much. So we hope and we anticipate that that will continue, but we know, we need some people to step forward. But it's in a, it's in a fast pace. The committee's worked very hard. We have several meetings a month, and I spend a lot of my time making bone bones.
Thank you. Mr. Butke.
Mayor, I'd like to call the question.
All right, so there is a motion and a second for the, what's that? Do we have a motion?
That takes person.
So there's a motion, a second to call a question. So there's, I don't, all right, please vote.
And as the city attorney just reminded, this will require two-thirds to be approved.
To call the question.
Call the question.
And the motion carries. So the original motion of Mr. Whittle's, and there was a second as well for the city to, to pay for the addition of $500,000 of soft costs. Please vote. That motion carries eight to two. One of the things I would like to bring up to the council is some of the questions that were asked were in the packet. How much we've raised, how much has been done, and what the soft costs done. And city staff does a lot of work in preparing this, so I think that would, that would to really go through that before. Item M, request to refer. Item M, request to refer construction of the new aquatic center on the current Hefo pool site to the plan commission for review and comment under Wisconsin's statute. Chapter 62.23, again presented by Justin Casperson.
Yeah. So under our state statute, it requires a referral from the council back to the plan commission for matters concerning its own bodies. So for the most part, you're going to refer this aquatic facility back to the plan commission for their review and consideration and a report, which will then be presented back to you. So it's kind of a tennis match, if you will. So it's your serve. You'll give it to the plan commission at their next meeting. We'll present the, the plans to them. They'll review them and then they'll provide a report back to you for your consideration. And this is all governed by state statute.
Thank you. So there is a motion by Mr. Whittleson, second by Mr. Fire to refer the pool project to the plan commission in a discussion. Seeing no discussion, please vote. Motion carries ten to zero. Item N, request for extension of time to complete exterior site improvements required under development agreement with the Innovative Machine Specialists, Inc., presented by Josh Miller, Development Services Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this year, we signed a development agreement with Innovative Machine Specialists to put a 20,000 square foot addition to help with their manufacturing facility needs. The agreement called for an increase in assessed value of a little over $900,000 to the property, to the, to the subject property. And in turn, the city would contribute $100,000 towards the development. Typically we break down the development incentives into three different parts. The first part is when footing and foundation is complete, we, it's about 20% and we, they finished that in, in early June and we gave them $20,000. The second part is a substantial completion of the building, which usually is indicated by a certificate of occupancy, meaning they can operate, they can occupy the building, they can get equipment in there. And that was a $70,000 incentive payment. And finally, there's, there's a last piece that usually addresses parking improvements and landscaping. This year, this fall, we had hit an early cold snap and we may continue to have those. But we, we can't pour asphalt or lay asphalt under a certain weather conditions. And they had called out American asphalt to do their parking area earlier, I think in October. They found out the grade was too flat, so they needed to put a catch basin in. And by the time that, um, just due to timing, they were no longer able to get American asphalt to come back and, and, um, lay the, the asphalt. So they didn't get the catch basin in either, but it didn't really pay to at that point. So basically with what they're, because of the, the weather conditions, they're not able to finish the project, the, the parking area by December 1st, which is what the deadline was. This is part of tid seven, which the expenditure period did end back in May. And so we're asking for basically an extension to, due to the, due to the weather situation, which kind of is spelled out in the development agreement, they can get an extension. Asking that the council would be able to send that to Ju- June 1st, 2020 to give them time to complete the parking addition. And really that's all that's left. So the, the building is done and that's really the, we probably need to relook at kind of the, the timing of the parameters of these agreements just because of landscaping and the final piece, really in the winter doesn't always make a lot of sense. And so we were hoping to get that done. The developer was hoping to get that done, but unfortunately that didn't happen. So with that, staff is requesting to approve the request to extend the development agreement with Innovative Machine Specialists to complete the landscape and parking improvements by June 1st, 2020.
Thank you. There is a motion by Mr. Butky, the second by Mrs. Spears to approve the requested extension. Discussion, please, Mr. Brinkswine.
Yeah, the, um, information here, I was struck by what says that an extension isn't, isn't allowed unless it's a civil disaster or act of God. Legally, is this an act of God then, bad weather?
I wonder if you really want me to answer?
Well, we could ask God, but.
Let's put it this way. I looked at this contract, talked about being all into consideration. And it certainly could reasonably fall within that consideration in the language of that contract. Typically, when that terminology used, is used in a contract, it probably is looking at more of, you know, something that would be catastrophic in nature. But I think in this particular contract, the way that it's used, it would fall within a category that could allow for an exception on this. I, I want to be careful because when you ask that that way, typically if you look at a contract and the definition of an act of God, it's, it's probably something more significant than just simply a weather thing.
Well, isn't this agreement just between two parties? Or is there another party involved that you couldn't just do it anyway?
Uh, okay. So I mean, um, one of the problems that we have in this is that we are dealing with tid and the financing that's used and the apparatus that's involved is very specific as to governing law. So there are other, our other parties, they actually are affected by this anyway. So typically you're right in a contract, both parties could agree to just simply extend something or agree to change that agreement in a particular way. But in this instance, there are other parties that are affected by that decision. And that's one of the things that Josh had mentioned was that, you know, the expenditure period is up. So that's, that's a reason for us to be looking at, is this okay to do under this contract? And I did look at it and felt that we were within at least a reasonable interpretation of the contract language to do that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Butky.
We should be happy that industries adding on. I understand the concern, but what kind of message would this be sending to an industry over something simple like this? This is, this is an easy thing, just extending it so that when the weather warms up, they can get it done. I, I just think we're sending the wrong message if we don't go along with this.
Thank you, Mr. Whittleson.
Thank you. Is June 1 enough? We've seen what our springs have been like.
Who knows? I mean, it could be number one and we may.
We could have a blizzard in May. I don't know.
We could. I mean, that's a fair, this is a request from the developers. So this is what I'm bringing forward. I would have no issue extending it out to July or August if that.
Okay, thank you.
Saying no further discussion, please vote. That motion carries ten to zero.
So to clarify, is that, I mean, do we want to stick with June 1 as Alderman Whittleson said or we? I guess we don't.
Yeah, there was no, there was no motion.
Thank you.
Uh, item O, request to review current regulations pertaining to operating an Airbnb in the city of Marshfield, presented by Steve Bark, City Administrator.
Thank you. And very quickly to clarify that last item before I get into this one. We did have a discussion on our executive team today, Dan, Josh, Ron and I. And we are going to be talking to the city attorney about maybe modifying that language for the future. We've been continuing to improve our development agreements. In fact, Josh is going to make a presentation on that next month about some of the upgrades we've done. But rather than acts of God, it could perhaps say in addition to that, things like excessive rain, cold, whatever, things you might not normally think of as disasters like tornadoes, but that do prevent developers from getting the work done that's anticipated. So maybe we'll, we'll put in future development agreements, put a little bit more flexibility there for interpretation. Uh, but the item before us right now on the Airbnb, I think many of you know that Airbnbs have become fairly popular across Wisconsin and the entire country. I know my wife and I have stayed in them many times in the last few years. People renting out their homes for short periods of time. But in looking at our code, there are some challenges. And I believe Councilmember Whittleson brought up at the last meeting, could we not talk about these and see where we stand and if we should look at a different idea? Currently, from talking with the Development Services Department, the definition that we would apply is tourist house and that's the closest we have. That's only permitted in our mixed use districts, downtown mixed use, you know, commercial mixed use, those kinds of things. And so to allow that, you'd have to rezone a property. Let's say you lived in a residential district, you'd have to have it rezoned to one of those classifications. And that's a fee. And then you'd also even after getting that zoning designation, you'd have to apply for a conditional use permit where your neighbors would get a chance to come to the meeting and weigh in. There's another fee too. So you'd be looking at a two-step process with $500 in application fees. And quite honestly, not a great chance of getting approval because the zoning district change might be fairly unlikely if you're surrounded by other residential uses. So there is merit to looking at this. I think staff is open to looking at this. And if the council feels it's worthwhile to take a new look at this issue and perhaps become a little bit more relaxed, I would recommend referring it to the plan commission for further study and recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Whittleson.
Thank you. The other concern I have regarding this really comes in into, I think, the ordinance also states it has to be a month at a time, which I don't really understand. Again, if it's a person using their own home to rent out or if it's a person who's invested to, to rent out. We've faced issue after issue after issue in this community. We just had a significant event happen a year ago with the Farm Technology Days where people are looking for rooms. And if, you know, if we can provide, people aren't going to rent a house for a month to go to the Farm Tech Days. They're going to rent it for a long weekend. And so if we want to really help with the tourism and the, the rooming and those types of things. And there's other, you know, other extenuating circumstances that people may be facing. And people looking for an Airbnb may be looking for it because their family's bigger than what can fit in a hotel room. Or maybe they have dietary concerns and they need to have access to a kitchen. I mean, there's a lot of reasons why people would maybe want to be using the Airbnb. And I think we're so restrictive. The other thing that concerns me is that I believe if one were to troll online, you would probably find that there are a whole lot of people who are thwarting this and doing things kind of behind closed doors simply to make the money and not have to go through all the hoops that are there. So I would really like to look at, you know, what are, are the fees really necessary? Do we have to look at the whole zoning thing? And do we really have to do a month at a time? It just doesn't seem to fit with the concept of Airbnb. Thank you. Steve.
Yeah, I think to address that, I mean, in looking at this, we'd have to look at the entire issue. One of the things that happens with zoning codes, and I think you know this, many of you, is that they become outdated after a while. Think of all the topics in the last 25 years that weren't addressed by a zoning code that would have been passed in the early 1990s. Cell towers and any number of technology things. Airbnbs are one of them. People were not doing this until recently. So the code that we have right now really doesn't even, when it talks about tourist home, tourist house, doesn't really anticipate the kind, kind of use we're seeing today. So besides just looking at whether or not we would allow them a little bit more flexibly, the whole manner in terms of how long and what stipulations or conditions. I mean, Development Services staff would have to get code language from other places and try and look at the entire package, not just, you know, just the application fees or whether they're needed, but what we're trying to do here, what we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you. Mr. Henler, is your motion to refer this to the planning commission? And Mr. Jockic, can you second that motion? Our discussion, Mr. Jockic.
And this is an extremely popular way for people to vacation, visit family that they can't stay with. This is happening all over the world. I've done this with my wife all over the world, all over this country. I, and I know Wausau, and I'm pretty sure Stephen's point, they must have ordinances because there are facilities that we've seen in both of those communities. So I, I think we don't even have to look far for examples of, of how to get their proper language for this to be approved here. So definitely support sending this to the.
Thank you, Mr. Butky.
Yeah, I don't necessarily have a problem with this, but if you go short term, you know, where you're allowed, then you're going against the motels and hotels, you know, if you allow that. I'd be a little concerned about that. And we've got a new one coming in again, motel too. So whatever we write, I think that might be one of the reasons for some of the language as to the length of time that it's required. I'm not saying it has to be what was read here, but I think we better consider that as well. But I'm for sending it to the plan commission.
Thank you, Mrs. Spears.
Um, I personally have never stayed in an Airbnb, so pardon my ignorance. But one of the things that I was wondering, and I assume is when people do rent out their homes for these short weekends or what have you, that they must do some sort of background check on the people that they are renting to? And if not, I, I guess that, if we're going to write a code, I, I would prefer that they do some sort of a background check. Because otherwise you wouldn't know, you know, who was staying next to you. And, and especially when it comes to like registered sex offenders or things like that. I mean, there, there's, I believe supposed to make their location known at all times, but you know, that's just a suggestion. I have no idea how that system all works anyway, so.
Thank you, Mr. Jockic.
I think that's something that I'm not sure that the cities have, but I know Airbnb and a couple of the other, you do background check. You were opening your house up. It may be a room. It may be in a, a, a separate room above a garage. There are background checks on both. You can go in and look and see reviews of where you're at, where you're looking to stay and vice versa, because those folk where you have stayed will write reviews on you. And everyone can double check and see how, what kind of a, a person you are for signing the contract. But that's all done through the, through the Airbnb website. I don't know if that's part of the terminology in there. I think that's why you need to look at other communities and see how they do it. But this is being done all over. We ought to be able to figure out how to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Whittleson.
Thank you. I, I guess I would be really concerned with throwing, throwing background check requirements into a, into an ordinance. It seems like a government overreach to me. I know we've had a lot of discussion of that recently. I think let the business do what it does. If I own a house, I'm going to make certain that the person who's renting the house is not going to be trashing the house. I mean, there's going to be things that I'm going to do as an owner. So I think let the industry handle itself, let those, those entities that, that run these things handle themselves. Let's just find out what's happening in other communities and move forward.
Steve.
And just on both those items, first of all, we're getting background checks. We'll certainly get copies of other cities' ordinances and we'll certainly be talking with the city attorney's office in terms of what we can or should be doing if, if it goes into that territory. I just want to touch on something that Tom had said earlier about the hotels and motels and competition. There's been movement afoot for quite a while of the lodging industry raising objection to Airbnbs getting by without paying room tax. And I think that you're seeing more and more communities that are finding ways, I think, to make sure that they do pay room tax because they are akin in a sense to hotels and motels. I don't know what that would require the city in terms of our role in making sure that happens or not. That's something we'll have to investigate. But that is, that has been a growing trend to expect that of those places.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Whittleson.
And regarding that, that is actually something that I think is important. I think Airbnb has actually put a policy in place that, that there has to be the collection of those taxes. So I know that there was some legislation that came through recently. And I actually talked with an individual who is following by the letter of the law, the Airbnb policies. And the comment that was made is that those that are doing those backroom policies or, or dealings right now, yeah, I'll rent out my house for a weekend kind of thing without having it on the, on the books because it's not the full month, you're not getting those room taxes. So by simply putting this and making it more convenient, that's going to allow us to have everything more in the open and then be able to collect more of those room taxes. So I think it's a, a benefit all the way around.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, please vote. Motion carries ten to zero. Item P, request to approve resolution number 2019-51 determining and levying the amount to be raised by taxation for city purposes for fiscal year 2020, presented by Ron Ammon, Finance Director.
Thank you. And you have the resolution in front of you. So the, it states the total adopted budget, all the expenses that was published in the newspaper, the total amount to be levied or within levy limits. And then the tax rate per thousand dollars, which is a, approximately a 3% increase over last year. Recall that, remember, we were just one taxing jurisdiction within the, uh, within the total tax rate. And based on preliminary numbers, it looks like our increase of 3% is going to come in under both counties, well under the tech and slightly above the, um, the school levy. So it seems like we are comparable to our other entities. Open for any questions?
Thank you. There is a motion by Mr. Butky and a second by Mr. Henler to approve resolution number 2019-51. A discussion, Mr. Butky.
I just want to remind the council that this is going to take seven votes to pass. I believe budget resolution, is it not? So it'd be six, then? Not a budget.
A budget resolution to amend the budget later would be seven.
Okay. So we need six votes to make this pass.
Mr. Whittleson.
The description stated about identifying the tax levy, but this is the full budget approval. If I'm reading this resolution correctly. So the description in the agenda seems a little bit confusing in that we're setting our tax levy amount. But in fact, the vote that we're about to make with motion and the second that's on the floor right now, that is actually for the entire. that is actually for the entire budget as it was presented and the open hearings of today.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, please vote. And that motion carries eight to two. Item Q, review progress on the city's 2019-2021 strategic plan, presented by Steve Bark, city administrator.
Thank you. I came before this body back in June to give the half year report. Again, the strategic plan we have in place is for 2019 through 2021, three years. And what we committed to the council is that we would review it internally, quarterly, and we'd review it with you semi-annually and annually. So this is the end of the year report for the first year of this three-year strategic plan. Just to refresh your memory, there were five areas. I did put the plan on everybody's desk today, so you've got the actual plan in front of you. But the five areas that we decided to target in adopting this plan in late 2018 were, we want quality economic and community development. We want management of the city's financial resources to be sound. We want to invest in the city's human resources. We want to do good communication with the city's stakeholders, the public and others. And then we want to improve the city's infrastructure. Those were the key strategies that we want to be working on during the three-year period. This, this is kind of the highlights of what's happened during 2019 as a whole. I'm going through each goal, some of them rather quickly. The first category is economic and community development. So in the first year, what we've accomplished from the plan you have in front of you with facilitating consistent and responsible growth, that's one of our goals under that strategy. We have had strategic plan discussion with the Economic Development Board. Josh oversaw having an economic development survey completed, which is very helpful. It told us what the public wanted to see. I think what came out is retail and restaurants and those kinds of things. And then working on a SWOT analysis with the key stakeholders involved in economic development. We also have gotten funds approved to update the Economic Development Action Plan. This goes back to, I believe, 2014 or thereabouts with redevelopment resources. Monies were not requested in the 2020 budget. Instead, they're going to seek a grant or likely include this in the 2021 budget to update that plan. The Economic Development Board, just for the record, is a lot of things going on. Their plate is pretty full, and that maybe explains part of this. Comprehensive plan update was approved in June, and implementation team has met to review the priorities. They'll be meeting at least quarterly, if not more, to, to update things. Josh and his staff continue to work on the zoning and building code updates. The subdivision code will follow that. And they're working with the technology department and the clerk's office on getting some new software to make building permit tracking and inspections tracking work better, be more efficient. And then we made contact with UW on possible land acquisition by the industrial park and the sewer service area plan. You just approved that earlier tonight to contract with North Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission to, to do that. And then monies have been budgeted in 2020 to acquire industrial land. We, we have land in the industrial park. We've talked about this before with Yellowstone. But after the PCA project, really, we don't have any large pieces. We have smaller parcels. And if you get a call from somebody saying, hey, look, we want 40 acres, can you help us? You know, we're really not in a position to do that right now. So we want to look at acquiring some more industrial land. Insurance sustainability of downtown. Been working with Main Street to implement the downtown master plan that was approved, I think, four or five years ago. A housing study has been updated and completed. I think you know this, there's been presentations made to various bodies, including the council. And the goal is to share this with others, which he's done, Josh I'm talking about there, and to use this in terms of policies and programs going forward. Drafting a zoning code update right now, and that could help address some of the concerns that have been raised over time by the Main Street and the business community downtown. And continuing to work with the Wenzel Family Plaza Committee in Main Street on making the Wenzel Family Plaza even better. I think we talked about recently that awards have been won from the Main Street Organization and the American Planning Association. We want to build on that. We want to get more concerts and special events and have more people using that as a community gathering place. Opportunities for quality, attractive housing. I go back to the housing study update that was completed, and the results have been presented to various groups. And with the council's approval, we've now developed an incentive program for new housing. Again, we're trying to get infrastructure put in so the subdivisions can take off. I think Josh has reported, and Dan as well, maybe, that we don't have that many lots available for building, and that hinders our growth. The council approved $500,000 in the CIP for each of the next three years, half from the city itself, half from the Economic Development Board fund. And a committee's been appointed. This is going back to the housing, the, you know, for single-family housing, some of those upgrades. And we've signed a contract with Juneau County to administer that. Enhancing the quality of life. You just talked about the Aquatic Center earlier today, and I appreciate your support as a staff. And looking at trying to get that done and started, I should say, by August 2020 and finished in 2021. We've already approved a number of things related to fundraising, design and construction management. The Cougar Exhibit Welcome Center, another great improvement. In the Wildwood Zoo has been completed. I hope some of you had a chance to go out there, even if you didn't make it to the ribbon cutting. But that's a great thing for our city. And then the Park and Recreation Director and Development Services Director have attended a sports tourism workshop, and we continue to partner with the Convention and Visitors Bureau on how to get more events here. You know, you hear sometimes about the fur traders or whoever it is. The more people we get to come and stay in our community, the more money we have spent in Marshfield, which is what we want to see. We want to see people coming here to enjoy our city and to spend dollars. Next of the five strategies is managing the city's financial resources. One thing we want to do is get a comprehensive five-year financial plan. This has been delayed for quite a while, I think you know, by some of the things we've gone through with the TID transfers and other financial challenges. Our financial advisor, Ellers, has helped us along the way, but it's delayed the drafting of this plan. But we're expecting a draft next month, and we expect to bring it to the council sometime soon after that, probably early in 2020. That is a key thing for us to tie together, again, the budget, the CIP, other funds, the debt load into one package that gives us a roadmap for the future. That really ties well with where we need to get to after some of the things that we've been through. Update the debt management policy, which is old. Most of the criteria are still valid, but some aren't. Ron's been working on this, and he expects to bring this to the council soon after we adopt the five-year financial plan. And then the funding for non-city agencies. You remember, we adopted a policy in 2018 that makes them compete with city departments for budget funds? Now, last month, we, we voted for approving all of those, and they were adopted into the budget that was given approval tonight. I guess I would make you think about it for the future, not tonight necessarily, but is that policy still valid? And we talked about the UW and the Central Wisconsin State Fair Board. Do they really need to be part of that process? And even beyond that, we just kind of blanketly approved them all. They're all worthwhile agencies, but what do we want to do for 2021 budget? Do we want to have that same process? Or do we want to say, look, let's incorporate some of them into the regular budget and not have those kind of meetings like we did this year? Investment in human resources. We have now continued work on fully implementing the new compensation plan that was adopted a couple of years ago. We had the McGrath Study. One of the things this council has told me is, those of you who've been here, going back to the Carlson Detman Study, we don't want to wake up five years from now and find ourselves behind again. That would be really disappointing after going through this whole agonizing process of upgrading the pay scale. So we did adopt the 2019 changes on July 1st. The 2020 budget does include a 1% adjustment in the pay scale plus continuing the steps for people who are advancing within their pay scale. So that's good news. The 2020 budget also includes the second and final year of this mid-year bump, where people have been in their current positions for 10-plus years and presumed to be held back from where they belong because our pay ranges have been down there for a while, get an extra step in order to help them catch up. And I appreciate the council passing that again in the 2020 budget. And then performance evaluations were finished during the second quarter. Successful performance evaluations are required for any of the things I'm talking about, whether it be step increases, whether it be the annual increase that all employees get. You must have a successful performance review, or you will not be granted that. One of the things we really want to do is get more employee appreciation and recognition, and been working hard on that. As mentioned earlier about, and thank you for that mayor, about the successful employee meeting we had over at the community center where we had, I think, 60 employees or so, many who were recognized for their years of service. But it was a great meal and a lot of fun. Also had a nice picnic back in July. We want to do more of this to the best of our ability to show people that we care about them as individuals and not just as workers. That's an important thing we want to strive for in the future. Along with that, we did adopt a years of service program. People really enjoy being recognized at this dinner for having 40 years or 35 years or 30 years of service, or right down to five years. It meant a lot to get a certificate signed by the mayor and to be told, well done. That's something we want to continue. And then the Employee E Clinic, I think you know about this. You gave approval for this pilot program earlier in the year. Where employees can be looked at right here in this building. They can go in a room, they can, they can use devices that are set up for them to maybe be checked out. Do I have a sinus infection? Do I have whatever? And if it's a routine thing, you know, there's no cost to the employee here, and that may save them the time of going to a clinic during the day, which could cost them an hour and a half or two hours of waiting time in a lobby. So we want to continue that pilot program. We also want to align benefits for our employees. Disability will be aligned for all non-represented staff as of January 1st of 2020. We've had disparity in this because of the union contracts going back before Act 10. We'd like to align dental benefits for all employees, all non reps by January 1st of 2020. And we'll be looking at the post-employment health benefits as well in 2021. The big thing we've done under being competitive from a benefit standpoint, really, beyond that, is vacation. We're very grateful to the council for updating the policy on vacation that allows employees to get one-hour increments. That is really useful. You used to have to take a half day off, and that makes for some odd discussions. If you can take it in one-hour increment, that really helps staff when they run into some of those weird circumstances. A 40-hour rollover possibility for staff. You, you didn't use it all this year, but you got a bigger vacation next summer. This gives you that possibility and those types of things. So we appreciate the policy upgrade. Increased communication with stakeholders. Remember, we started the new department with Tom Lokes and David Bennett earlier this year. We'd hoped to get a little bit farther in terms of developing a full-blown communications plan. But I think we forgot there were a lot of pieces to put in place. I mean, we had a cable TV station to take over from the former provider. We had all the policies and procedures and all the, the whole foundation to put in place. We needed to get a new committee to replace the old cable TV committee. Those things have largely been put in place. The Communications Committee now has had three meetings, and they're, they're getting past the, the housekeeping and perfunctory things and ready to launch into that communication plan development. And Tom has done a wonderful job in putting those pieces in place. He's been working on updating our website, marketing and outreach, and just all the things that we have to do, including social media. What do we need to do to advance ourselves in the world of communications? And then finally, we want to measurably improve the city's infrastructure. If you remember, a few years ago, we had a study done, I think the University of River Falls, Wisconsin River Falls did it. Every category did really well for us in terms of how people view us, except for street maintenance. And that's because, guess what? If you drive on a street that has potholes, you're going to rate it low. If you live near one like that, if you drive one, one on the way to work, that's no disrespect or negativity toward our staff or the work that we do trying to keep up streets. It's just that streets hit home for a lot of people. So we want to improve the average street condition. Dan and Tom and their staff have created a three-year plan that's, I believe, out there on the web. The mayor promoted this idea so people can see when their street is going to be worked on. The adopted CIP calls for about $2 million a year in mill and overlay, mill in place and overlay projects, which is really important. The 2020 asphalt paving plan that's going forward as part of the budget would have us doing about three miles, again, about $2 million. I think Dan has reported before that anything less than four miles is really not keeping up, but it's trying to do the best we can with the monies we have. And we do need an updated pavement ratings before we can give you a report as to how we're doing. And hopefully that will be in 2020. We want to construct the streets for new development. I mentioned that before. We brought to you two project ideas in the last couple of months, one in Prairie Run and one at the intersection of Lincoln and Adler. I think some concerns were raised about the one at Lincoln and Adler because of the size of those lots. They're called pocket homes. There were some other questions, and that one's been kind of set on the shelf for now, but it probably will be coming back or could be coming back in 2021. But you've given the approval to going ahead with the Prairie Run project in 2020. We thank you for that. The cost of that is almost $400,000 to put in the street, and we only budgeted $500,000. So we couldn't have done both projects anyway. But this is the way we can tell people, you can tell your constituents that we are trying to help grow the city. I believe that was four single-family homes and six, two-family homes or something. Ten, what? Ten total, yeah, four and six, right? Right. And so that's, that's a benefit to new housing. And then we're also looking to establish priorities for public facilities. Dan has been working on this. He brought to you a study back in the early part of 2019 on where we would locate a police station. Would we stay on site, expand and renovate that building? Or would we find a new property to build an entirely new police station? The council's directive was to stay on site. As part of that, we've recently acquired a property that would give us the opportunity for more parking if that development goes forward. We don't have the financing plan for a police expansion or renovation right now. At least we know where it's going to happen, that's helpful. And then also, we have budgeted funds for Dan to also lead the charge in terms of getting a study of the street department space needs. Do they have enough space? Is their building configured well? What's the future look like for use of that structure? So we'll continue with that as we go into 2020. So in conclusion, I think we made really good progress in 2019. If you, if you look at the list of goals, it was aggressive as a plan often is. We had a lot of things thrown at us during the year. We talked about a lot of things at meetings that have nothing to do with this list. Every year, we have issues and concerns come up that we deal with, development, ordinances. The last couple of months, we talked about smoking in parks and guns in this building. So you can't always focus your entire attention on the list of goals. But I think, given the heavy workload, I think we've done pretty well. Staff reviewed the plan in the last month or so to see if we thought it needed to be updated and maybe take off an item that was on there for 2020 and replace it with something more time-sensitive. We didn't find anything like that. We still believe that the 2020 and 2021 goals are what they should be. That's our perspective. It may not be council's, but that's what we see. So we're not recommending any changes. We're recommending just continuing forward. The 2019 things that didn't get accomplished, we want to roll those into 2020 and keep pressing on as best we can with the highest priority items. So now we look for questions from the mayor and council. Do you have any ideas for changes? Is there something that's not on the plan that you think ought to be bumped into those final two years? And we'd like to talk to you about that either now or if you want to come back at the next meeting. And otherwise, our next update would be in June of 2020, and we'll take a look at the mid-year report for the second of the three years.
Thank you. Questions for Steve, Mr. Butke?
Just to comment, I've said it before, and I really believe it. Our staff is doing an excellent job. We're getting a lot done. And I'm, I'm very impressed. I don't want to single anybody out, you know, because all of our staff's doing a good job. But I think we've made real progress with the communication. I'll say our HR person, Jen, I, I think that's the best one that we've had since I've been in the council. And I just appreciate what everybody's doing.
Thank you. Nick?
Thank you. I just want to echo that, that we have a lot of good staff here that have done a great job of keeping up with this plan. And when will we be adding 2022 to this?
Oh, that's a good question. We talked at staff level about whether or not we would consider this to continue being a 2019 to 2021 plan going into its second year, or would we try to update the plan and make it a new three-year plan, 2020 to 2022? We felt the best thing to do is maybe to get through 2020 and get into early 2021 and talk about what would be the next three years. There's no right or wrong answer, but I, I think since we felt so much of the 2020 and 2021 goals are still relevant, we thought maybe that there wasn't a need to do a full rollover into a new three-year time period. But again, that's, that's up to what the council wants to do. I want to echo a little bit or add on to what you and Tom have said, though. Thank you for those comments. I agree that we have a wonderful staff right now, as good a staff as I can remember working with in my many years in government. So we have some good people who work hard, and thank you for those comments.
Any further questions for Steve? All right. All right. Item R, request to change the date and time of the second council meeting in December to Tuesday, December 17th, 2019, at 7:00 PM or after the planned commission meeting, presented by Steve Bark.
I was going to get back over there, but I didn't make it, so here I am. I feel kind of powerful here, though, like when residents come and speak of public comment. I'll share some other things I don't like about the city. Just kidding. What we're looking at is, we often do this in the second meeting in December because it would normally fall around Christmas. Nobody, I'm guessing none of you want to be here on December 24th at 6:00 PM. So we're looking at Tuesday, December 17th, and we've done this before. The layout would be like this. Traditionally licensing at 5:00, finance budget personnel at 5:30, plan commission at 6:00, council at 7:00. It's kind of a full plate, but that would allow the finance and plan commission recommendations to come forward to the council for approval, get all the business done that night and not have another meeting until early January. We would try, was mentioned to me before, do we really need to have a meeting on December 17th? Usually we do. We usually have enough housekeeping items, you know, insurance and those kinds of things to require us to meet. We'll definitely do our best to keep that agenda, you know, limited if the, if the body would like that. Again, a week before Christmas, it's always nice to have a shorter meeting. But I would look for your approval to make this meeting set for Tuesday, December 17th. to make this meeting set for Tuesday, December 17 at 7:00 p.m.
So there is a motion and a second to that effect. Discussion, Mrs. Burrows.
Yes, I apologize. I will not be able to make that date of that meeting, and, because I'll be in Aruba, but I would like, I would ask Councilman McSwain if he would be able to fill in for me on JL.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, please vote. Motion carries ten to zero. Item S, adjourn to closed session under Wisconsin Statutes, Chapter 19.851E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Sale of city-owned property located at 305 West Third Street and possible assistance for project located within Tiff District 7, and closed session under Wisconsin Statutes, Chapter 19.851G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation, which is or is likely to become involved. Possible litigation regarding copyright claim. There's a motion by Mr. Whitson, second by Mr. Budke, to go into closed session. Seeing no discussion, please vote. And that motion carries. We are in.